Good evening. This is the eighty-fourth regular meeting of the seventy-third term of your Baltimore City Council, and it's now called to order. As a reminder for folks, the general public or visiting us today, we please ask that you have all your electronic devices turned off or at a minimum placed on silence to assure that you do not disrupt tonight's proceedings. At this time, we will say, we will have a quick moment of silence in replacement of the invocation. Thank you. At this time, I ask everyone to stand and please state the pledge of allegiance with me. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. For our showcase this evening, we'll hear from Leonore Blum, the founder and executive director of Moore Roma. Program coordinator as well, we have Ms. Latina. At this time, you please take the mic.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes. Loud and clear, yeah.
Okay. So my name is Leonore Blum, and I founded Adelante Latina. I'm from Argentina originally. And Adelante Latina is a free three-year program to prepare Latina girls who attend city schools for college. And practically, well, all of our students go to city public schools. Next. So the program was founded in 2013. We started off at the Esperanza Center with twelve students. And a couple of years later, the building next to the Esperanza Center burned down, and so the Esperanza Center had to be rebuilt. In the meantime, we moved to Notre Dame of Maryland University, which is where we continued our program. However, the, once the Esperanza Center reopened, we could no longer fit because we now have forty-three students, forty-three tutors, and three teachers. So we were too big for the premises. So it's, as I mentioned, a college prep program. Next slide. Okay. So why do we focus on Latina girls? Because many Latino families are still traditional, have traditional feelings about the role of a woman. A woman is ta en la casa, and the boy is ta en la calle. And so to bring in money and be en la calle, the boy is the one who gets the education, and the girl has to do a lot of household chores and a lot of babysitting. So we want to break that mold by helping the Latina girls get ahead. So the program is a three-year program. For the first two years, we concentrate on helping them with their English, increasing vocabulary, increasing their reading comprehension, and also essay writing. And then their senior year, we focus mostly on college applications and financial aid and, you know, getting them to be able to attend college for free or almost for free. So we also have the opportunity to offer math and science tutoring if the students need that tutoring for school. Next slide. Okay. So we go to schools to recruit the students, and the main schools that we recruit from are Poly, Western, City College, ACE, and Dunbar. And the students have to have a three-point-oh or above GPA. And also, of course, they have to have a Latino family. Next.
Good afternoon. My name is Mara Romo. I am the program coordinator for Adelante Latina, and I'm going to explain a little bit how the program works. So our students come to Adelante Latina twice per week. We organize transportation to take the students from their high schools and take them to Notre Dame of University. And on one day, the students attend class with a certified English teacher. The class is focused on English composition, so writing, reading, vocabulary. And our seniors really focus on college applications, scholarship applications, and financial aid. The students will then have homework for projects that are specifically for Adelante Latina. And on the next day of the program, they will meet one-on-one with a volunteer tutor. And the tutor will guide them through their projects and work with them ideally for three years until the student graduates from high school. So it's almost a mentorship with the students and their tutors. After class and tutoring, we provide a free meal to the students. We then bus them to Enot Pratt Free Library on Eastern Avenue in Highland Town, where they are picked up from their families, by their families. And we also offer snacks when the students first arrive.
Next slide, please.
After the school year, we have a summer camp. It is for a week. It's held at Notre Dame of Maryland University. And students attend different presentations. We have Latina leaders in different career fields come to camp and talk to the students. They go on field trips. Last year, we went, or in June, we went to a marketing agency where students heard from a panel. We went to Outward Bound where students did trust-building exercises. We went to the zoo and met with veterinarians. And students are staying in dorms, so they really get an experience of what college is like. And after camp, we encourage students to get internships, and we help students obtain internships for the summer. And many are through youth works here through the city.
So additional benefits from our program, we take our students to museums, we take them to different theater productions. And the most attractive benefit, of course, is the, are the $3,000 that we give each student after graduating from our program if the student is going to college. And the money generally goes directly to the college. Next. In addition to helping our students, we realized how important it is also to help the families. And so we have monthly Zoom meetings. We have a person who is especially in charge of families and alumni. And during these Zoom meetings, what she does is she will present a speaker who will speak about taxes and how they have to be paid, where to get health care, mental health care, how to help their daughters through college and also through high school. So this has been very beneficial. We also keep track of our alumni and give them advice as to that they should not forget to complete their FAFSA form and, you know, and also provide them with jobs and internships. So our success, as you can see, our retention rate is, our program retention rate for all three years is eighty-one percent. One hundred percent of our students attend college, I mean, no, are accepted to college, sorry. And ninety percent go to college, most of them debt-free. We also have a very good year-to-year persistence rate of ninety percent. Next. Okay. Before I go to the next slide, let me tell you about a success story of a person that you know. And that is Yaslin Machuca, who is the chief of staff for Odette Ramos. She went through the Adelante Latina program. She's sitting right there, conducting the slideshow. So how about an applause for Yaslin? So these are just our financials to see, you know, where our support comes from. Most of our support comes from grants. I write most of the grants. And then we also receive other assistance from private donors. Next. And these are our expenses. So with that, our presentation is complete, and we thank you so much for letting us present.
Thank you so much. Please give a hand, a round of applause. Thank you so much for coming and joining us this evening. We're also joined by some other special guests in the gallery. Leadership Baltimore, if you could all please stand and get warm applause from the council. Obviously, this is a program that's been here and around the country for decades and that really identifies thought-provoking, fearless leaders of today, but more importantly, connecting them for tomorrow to help solve some of our challenges and move our city in the right direction. So we thank you for all of your leadership and all your hard work and all the things you're going to do for the city of Baltimore years to come. Thank you. With that, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
President Mosby, Cohen, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Torrance, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you so much. We'll now proceed to adoption of the journal, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, the journal for the September sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four regular meeting proceedings are on the council member's desk.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing and seeing none, the journal is now adopted. Bill signed by the American, be found in the beginning of tonight's agenda on page two. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you could please take us into executive nominations.
EA two-four dash zero-two-five-five Eric Jackson, member of Community Reinvestment and Reparations Commission, District Ten.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and legislative oversight. Madam Clerk.
EA two-four dash zero-two-five-six Andre Turner, member of Community Reinvestment and Reparations Commission, District Two.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk, next bill.
EA two-four dash zero-two-five-seven Robert A. Turner, member of Community Reinvestment and Reparations Commission, District Five.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and legislative oversight. Madam Clerk, next bill.
EA two-four dash zero-two-five-eight Latrice Gant, member of Community Reinvestment and Reparations Commission, District Eight.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and legislative oversight.
EA two-four dash zero-two-five-nine Anthony Francis, member of Community Reinvestment and Reparations Commission, District Nine.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and legislative oversight. We'll now turn to bills to be introduced tonight. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the first bill.
Yep. City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-nine-three Ordinance two-four dash three-six-two Revenue Obligations Water Projects repeal and replace for the purpose of repealing and replacing Ordinance two-four dash three-six-two due to clerical error, maintaining the city's authorization to issue revenue obligations within the maximum aggregate principal amount of the revenue obligations that may be outstanding, authorized and calculated as of June thirtieth of each year by the city to finance or refinance water facilities. And in that connection, amending and restating Ordinance zero-two dash three-three-one as amended by ordinances zero-four dash six-eight-seven, seven dash four-two-zero, eleven dash four-two-nine, and one-four dash two-nine-two, authorizing the Board of Finance to specify, prescribe, determine, provide for, approve, and amend the form, terms, provisions, manner, or method of issuing and selling, the time or times of issuance, and all other details of the revenue obligations and any other matters necessary or desirable in connection with the authorization, issuance, sale, and payment of these revenue obligations, providing for a special effective date and generally relating to the issuance and payment of revenue obligations, sponsor administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-nine-four Citywide Affordable Housing Bond Issuance for the purpose of authorizing the issuance of special obligation bonds and the pledge subject to appropriation of tax increment revenues as such term is defined herein to the payment of debt service their own, providing that such bonds may be issued from time to time and in one or more issues or series in an aggregate principal amount not exceeding sixty-five million to support, subject to additional mayor and city council approval, a borrowing program in the aggregate principal amount of one-hundred-and-fifty million for the purpose of financing costs associated with the rehabilitation of vacant units and the development of affordable housing, certain public infrastructure improvements, and other related costs, including without limitation the project defined herein and other necessary improvements to, from, or within a development district and certain other improvements permitted by the Tax Increment Act defined herein, providing for the method and sources of payment for such special obligation bonds, authorizing the Board of Finance to specify, prescribe, determine, provide for, and approve the details, forms, documents, or procedures in connection with such special obligation bonds and any other matters necessary or desirable in connection with the authorization, issuance, sale, and payment of such special obligation bonds, authorizing the Board of Finance to specify, prescribe, determine, provide for, and approve the method and sources of such pledge, the details, forms, documents, or procedures in connection with such pledge and any other matters necessary or desirable in connection with such pledge, providing for a special effective date, providing that the city in each fiscal year in which any such bonds are outstanding use its best efforts to obtain the appropriation of the tax increment revenues and the amounts and at the time specified in the trust agreement or agreements between the city and a bank or trust company appointed as trustee thereunder and generally relating to the issuance and payment of special obligation bonds, sponsor administration.
She said that without taking one breath. Give her a glass of water. This bill has been assigned to committee as a whole. Madam Clerk, the next bill.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-nine-five Citywide Affordable Housing Development District for the purpose of designating a development district to be known as the Citywide Affordable Housing Development District, providing for and determining various matters in connection with the establishment of the development district, creating a special tax increment fund for the development district to provide for the financing of costs associated with the rehabilitation of vacant units and the development of affordable housing, allocating certain property taxes to that fund, making certain findings and determinations, providing for a special effective date, and generally providing for matters relating to the designation and operation of the development district, the establishment and use of the special tax increment fund to provide for the payment by or reimbursement to the city for debt service, which the city is obligated to pay or has paid, whether such obligation is general or limited, any special obligation bonds or notes issued by the city, the replenishment of any reserve fund established for any bonds, and the payment of certain expenses and administrative costs related to the operation of the development district and providing for a special effective date, sponsors administration.
This bill has been assigned to committee as a whole. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-nine-six Sale of Property, fourteen-hundred Luddenhall Street for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interests in certain property that is located at fourteen-hundred Luddenhall Street, block zero-nine-eight-seven, lot zero-zero-three, and is no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date, sponsor the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-nine-seven City Property Renaming Riverside Park Pool to the Congressman Elijah E. Cummings Community Pool for the purpose of changing the name of the Riverside Park Pool located at eighteen-hundred Covington Street, block one-nine-four-zero, lot zero-zero-one to the Congressman Elijah E. Cummings Community Pool, sponsor Costello.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The body would like to recognize Chair of the Committee and sponsor of the bill, Chairman Costello, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the result of four or five years of discussions with community members and with the daughters of the late Congressman Elijah Cummings. Pleased to report that the daughters are both in support of this measure. Mr. President, as you're aware, and as I think many of our colleagues are aware, the renaming of this pool in Riverside has a very historic significance, specifically when the late Congressman Elijah Cummings was a young boy. He was one of about ten or a dozen kids who helped integrate that pool, something that the late Congressman spoke about many times in public. And I think it is as fitting of a tribute as we can make to Congressman Cummings for everything that he's done for each of us in the city of Baltimore. And I hope to have our colleagues' support for this measure. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I ask our Executive Secretary, if you could please put me down as a second co-sponsor. I also see the hand raised of Chairman Stokes. I see the hand raised of Chairman Bullock, Chairman Schleifer, Chairman Conway, Councilmember Dorsey, Councilmember Burnett, Councilwoman Ramos, Councilwoman Porter, Councilman Glover, Councilman Cohen, and Councilman Torrance. So if you could please ensure that all names are entered in as co-sponsors. This bill will be assigned to Ways and Means. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next bill.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-nine-eight Rezoning, twelve-twenty-three through twelve-twenty-nine Argyle for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as twelve-twenty-three through twelve-twenty-nine Argyle Avenue, block zero-four-one-three, lot zero-three-two. It's outlined in red on the accompanying plaque from the R eight zoning district to the I one zoning district, sponsor Costello.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Next bill, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-five-nine-nine Zoning Conditional Use Crematorium for the purpose of creating a standalone use in the zoning code for crematoriums, amending certain related definitions, revising certain zoning tables to include the use crematorium, making conforming changes, providing for a special effective date, and generally related to creating the standalone use crematorium in the zoning code, sponsor Conway.
The body would like to recognize, sponsor the bill, Chairman Conway, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I begin explaining the bill, I want to acknowledge some community folks from the York Road Corridor, from the Govents neighborhood, who have come out today to stand in strong support of this bill. If you guys could just rise, I'd just really want to appreciate you. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Earlier today, we had a couple dozen folks out here for exactly this issue. This is an issue that I guess many of us didn't know was an issue across our city. That is the ability for our funeral homes and our cemeteries to open up crematoria. Now, I have no problem with crematoriums. And I think many of us here will likely be cremated one day. The issue is, today, right now, crematoriums can be opened, anywhere a funeral home can be opened, and anywhere a cemetery can be opened. And this presents a unique problem because there are funeral homes all over our city which provide a very important and useful service to the city of Baltimore, but they are also in neighborhoods, in, you know, very close to very densely populated neighborhoods. And the pollution that comes off of these crematories potentially can be a huge human health impact. Of course, the folks who are here today are from the York Road Corridor, and they've been fighting for the last five years. One has been proposed in my district, and I'm here to stand with them today and also to provide a very sensible and straightforward and logical solution to that problem. What this bill does is it separates cemeteries from funeral homes. And it separates, excuse me, crematorium. It separates crematorium from funeral homes, and it separates crematoriums from cemeteries. This is a very straightforward, I think, and practical solution to the problem. And what it does is it pulls out C-two districts from that designation, noting that C-two districts are designed to be next to densely populated neighborhoods in order to provide business services to those neighborhoods. What we all know, and I'm sure everyone here certainly would not want, is to have homes, schools, and playgrounds next to a smokestacks. And that's the reality that we present today with the current condition that our code is in. This seeks to fix that. And I really, really look forward to having the conversation with my colleagues and eventually the support of all of my colleagues and, of course, the support of the administration. So thank you, Mr. President, and look forward to your support.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I see one hand raised for co-sponsorship. That's Councilman Dorsey. I see Councilman Glover, Councilman Cohen, Councilwoman Ramos. This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next bill.
City Council Bill two-four dash zero-six-zero-zero Zoning Conditional Use of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Three Dwelling Units in the R eight zoning district, variances twenty-one oh-six McCullough Street. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to three dwelling units in the R eight zoning district on the property known as twenty-one oh-six McCullough Street, block zero-three-zero-nine, lot zero-zero-five, is outlined in red on the accompanying plaque and granting a variance from off-street parking requirements and providing for a special effective date, sponsor Torrance.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. At this time, we're going to resolutions to be introduced tonight. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the first resolution.
City Council Resolution two-four dash zero-two-three-one-R Informational Hearing, twenty-twenty-four Election Procedures for the purpose of inviting the Director of the Baltimore City Board of Elections, relevant staff members, and the members of the Board of Elections to appear before the City Council to discuss the upcoming twenty-twenty-four general election and how the Board of Elections will address the problems that arose in the twenty-twenty-four primary election that are enumerated in the recitals of this resolution, sponsor Ramos.
The council yields the time to sponsor the resolution. Councilwoman Ramos, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. This resolution is designed to look at some of the problems that we had during the primary election, which included the fact that the sample ballot looked exactly like the regular mail-in ballot. There were not as many judges as there were supposed to be in each poll and a few other items. And so if we do have the time to have this hearing to be able to just make sure that the Board of Elections is ready to go, but also offer our assistance as needed. So thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you. This resolution has been assigned to rules and legislative oversight. Madam Clerk, the next resolution.
City Council Resolution two-four dash zero-two-three-two-R Reaffirming Baltimore's Commitment to Reproductive Rights for the purpose of reaffirming the city of Baltimore's commitment to protecting its citizens' reproductive rights and support for measures, including a state constitutional amendment to ensure access to abortion, family planning, labor and delivery care, miscarriage management, pre and postnatal care, and all other reproductive health services regardless of background, sponsor Porter.
At this time, the body would like to recognize, sponsor the bill, Councilwoman Felicia Porter.
Thank you, sir. This resolution calls for the reaffirmation of Baltimore City's unwavering commitment to safeguarding reproductive rights. It is crucial to emphasize the importance of the measures to ensure comprehensive and equitable access to reproductive health services. This includes support for a state constitutional amendment on this year's ballot that guarantees access to abortion, family planning, labor and delivery care, miscarriage management, pre and postnatal care, and other essential reproductive health services regardless of an individual's background. By doing so, Baltimore affirms its dedication to the health and autonomy of its residents, promoting reproductive justice and equity in healthcare. Mr. President, I move to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Without objection, rules ten-two and ten-three will be suspended for immediate adoption.
Mr. President, I move that the resolution be adopted.
Actually, I think for us to do immediate same-day, we need a roll call. So Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll of members here.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
The motion approves. The resolution has been adopted. Are we good, Mr. Palmer? We're good? All right. Now, are you a member of this class? Ah. Someone brought some extra support tonight. Is that right? The motion is approved. The resolution has been adopted. You can find the consent calendar in section A at the back of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? It's been moved in probably second-class favor. Please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The consent calendar is now approved. We will now move to bills on second reader. Before we do, I'd like to recognize Chairman Costello. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Without objection, we'll be in short titles for duration of this meeting, hearing, and seeing none or readiness. We are in short titles. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the first bill and second reader.
City Council Bill two-two dash zero-two-one-seven Franchise Storm Drain Outfall.
At this time, the Chair of the Committee, Chairman Bullock, is recognized, if you could please.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was heard on September seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four. It was voted favorably. I move the bill favorable.
It's been moved in probably second-class favor. Please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next bill.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-four-five-four Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R eight zoning district, ten-twenty-two West Landvale Street.
At this time, the body would like to recognize Chair of the Committee, Chairman Bullock. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was also heard on September twenty-fourth. It was voted favorably. There are findings of facts on my colleague's desk, and I move the findings of fact.
It's been moved in probably second-class favor. Please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The finding of facts have now been adopted. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorable.
It's been moved in probably second-class favor. Please say aye. All in favor, please say aye. There we go. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The bill is approved. It will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next bill.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-four-six-nine Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R eight zoning district, variances ten-fourteen Edmondson Avenue.
At this time, the Chair of the Committee will be recognized, Mr. Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was also heard on September twenty-fourth. It was voted favorably. And there are findings of facts on my colleague's desk. I'd like to move the findings of fact.
It's been moved in probably second-class favor. It's been moved in probably second. All in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The finding and facts are now adopted. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorable.
Is there a second? It's been moved in probably second. All in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This bill is approved and will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next bill.
City Council Bill 24-0475, release of a 20-foot right-of-way identified as parcel three is shown on plaque RW20-34176, and release of a 10-foot right-of-way identified as parcel two is shown on plaque RW20-34429.
At this time, the body would like to recognize chair of the committee, Chairman Bullock. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was heard on September 17th and was voted favorably as amended. And there are committee amendments on my colleague's desk. I'd like to move the amendments.
Is there a second? It's been moved in probably second. All in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The amendments are adopted. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorable as amended.
It's been moved in probably second. All in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 24-0476, partial release of right-of-way for municipal utilities and services through the residents at Roland Heights, formerly Headwind Property.
At this time, I'd like to recognize chair of the committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was heard on September 17th and was voted on favorably as amended. There are committee amendments on my colleague's desk, and I'd like to move the amendments.
Is there a second? It's been moved in probably second. All in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorable as amended.
At this time, is there a second? It's been moved in probably second. All in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The bill will be approved on third reading. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 24-0497, zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R8 zoning district, variances 1005 West Landvale Street.
At this time, the body would like to recognize chair of the committee, Chairman Bullock. The floor is yours.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This bill was heard in committee on September 24th and was voted on favorably. There are findings of facts on my colleague's desk. I'd like to move the findings of fact.
Is there a second? It's been moved in probably second. All in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The finding and facts are now adopted. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorable.
Is there a second? It's been moved in probably second. All in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 24-0515, zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R8 zoning district, variances 223 South Stricker Street.
At this time, the chair of the committee would like to recognize Chairman Bullock. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was heard on September 24th. It was voted on favorably. And there are findings of facts on my colleague's desk. I'd like to move the finding of facts.
Is there a second? It's been moved in probably second. All in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The finding and facts are now adopted. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill as favorable.
It's been moved in probably second. All in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, the next bill.
City Council Resolution 21-0077R, informational hearing, implementation of landlord licensing.
At this time, the chair of the committee would like to be recognized. Chairman Bullock, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This bill was heard on September 17th. It was voted on favorably. I move the resolution as favorable.
It's been moved in probably second. Madam Clerk, if you could please call a roll.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock.
Aye.
Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
This resolution is adopted. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next bill.
City Council Resolution 23-0192R, approval for the exchange of a Class BD7 license to a Class A7 license for use at 1,000 West Lombard Street, 21223.
At this time, the body would like to recognize chair of the committee, Chairman Bullock. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was heard on September 24th. It was voted on favorably. I move the resolution favorable.
It's been moved in probably second. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you could please call a roll.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock.
Aye.
Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
This resolution has been adopted. Now, we're going to turn it over to Ways and Means. Madam Clerk, if you could please call in the first bill.
City Council Bill 23-0362, interim foreclosure, scope of subtitle.
At this time, the body would like to recognize chair of the committee, Chairman Costello. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. We held a hearing on this matter last week. There were amendments to the original bill, which were adopted by the committee. However, the committee had an unfavorable report on the amended bill. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos.
Mr. President, I'm requesting that I withdraw this bill.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. President, I have no concerns with the bill being withdrawn.
At this time, we do need to take a... We don't have to second. It's not a motion. Is it a motion? She has to put a motion. So, Madam...
Move to withdraw.
She has a motion. Is there a second? It's been moved in probably second. All in favor, please say aye to withdraw. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The bill will be withdrawn. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next bill.
City Council Bill 23-0363, land bank authority.
At this time, the chair of the committee, Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. We held a hearing on this matter last week. There were amendments to the originally proposed bill, which were adopted by the committee. However, the committee had an unfavorable report on the bill as amended. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Notwithstanding the outcome of the committee's recommendation, is there a motion to approve this bill on third reading?
Mr. President, I'd like to withdraw this bill.
Mr. Chair, any objection?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't see any reason why the committee would object to that. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Any additional readiness? You would like to second? Is there any additional unreadiness? It's a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This bill will be withdrawn. Madam Clerk, if you could please go to bills on third reading.
City Council Bill 23-0367, prohibition gas-powered debris removal equipment.
I think we have a floor amendment. Oh, he's going to go. Okay. You would like the floor. At this time, sponsor of the bill, Chairman Dorsey, has some information to add.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the vote of this bill on second reader, there has been a significant volume of communication to members of the council about this bill. We... Councilmember Conway and I had a lot of discussion about this and collaboratively came to an amendment that we believe fairly addresses the concerns, specifically addressing landscaping companies and moving them to a more gradual timeline for phased-in implementation of the law, but retaining the city as a leader on this. For those who are not on the committee, one of the things that was made clear to us is that the administration and the city agencies who contract or perform services in-house to landscape and maintain property so that they have no problem making that transition this year effectively immediately, but what the bill gives until December 15th of this year, that is for both the city agencies who do this kind of work and their contractors on the contracts. And so we have an amendment that just moves landscape maintenance companies who, in the second reader version of the bill, which we voted out of committee and which we voted here at the last council meeting, we moved landscaping maintenance companies out of that very immediate timeline to this more gradual timeline over the next two years. And so we have an amendment before the council in the packet for that purpose. Mr. President, I'd like to move that amendment here on third reader.
Is there, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. President. I had an opportunity to speak with the sponsor of the amendment prior to the meeting, and I just had one question for clarification, which I think he's answered, but I just want to ask the question a different way. So, the... In one bucket, you have the city of Baltimore and the contractors who use these devices in their service as part of their contract with the city of Baltimore. And then in addition, originally, there was all other contractors who were included in that timeframe for implementation. And to confirm, your amendment takes the all other contractors and moves them to the other timeframe for implementation. Did I characterize the amendment correctly? Thank you. And, Mr. President, I want to thank the sponsor for being amenable to that amendment. While I still have concerns with the legislation, I do appreciate the sponsor's willingness to work with everyone on that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I believe we have a motion on the floor for this amendment. It's been moved in properly second. All in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. Please note that I'm a nay for this amendment. Mr. Chair? So, that amendment is adopted from the floor? Mr. Chair, the floor is back. You're back up. No, no, we just adopted the amendment.
Mr. President.
So, we just... Oh, so since we adopted the amendment, now we have to come back next week for the third reading, right? It moves back to second. Got it. Thank you. Anything else to add?
It moves...
Back to second for the next council hearing.
It needs to be reprinted for third reader for the next council meeting. Is that correct?
The parliamentarian is saying that it moves back to second reader.
For tonight? So, are we voting it on second reader here tonight as newly amended?
It's not on the agenda. It moves back to second reader for next meeting. This is a floor amendment.
Okay, my reading of the rule says that when amended on third reader, it goes back to third reader for the next council meeting.
Well, that's not the instruction of this body's parliamentarian.
So, it's going to be back on second reader next council meeting?
It's a floor amendment on third reader. We accepted the floor amendment. It moves it back on second reader to the next council meeting.
Good.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 24-0...
I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. And, yeah, I didn't get a chance to explain my vote. I would like to quickly explain my vote. I stood up here last council hearing. I've spoken to many of you privately, even the bill sponsor, and I've spoken out about it publicly. You know, I think us in the 11th hour trying to correct some of the unintended consequences shows where we are with the maturity of this particular bill. The reality is, there's been a lot of work, not just on the fourth floor from me, but also on the second floor from the administration, to look at contracts that we can unbundle to ensure that minority, women-owned, and local-owned companies have access to contracts that have been long withstanding without their participation. And when we talk about cutting grass of schools, or cutting grass of rec centers, or cutting grass of city fields, that seems like something that is pretty straightforward. But there were these really large and arduous types of contracts that smaller vendors located in our city that are owned by minority companies, that are owned by minority owners, that are owned by women owners, did not have access to these bills, to these contracts. I think this bill, how it is intended to provide a great service to our environment and move us incrementally in the right direction, I think it's ill-timed. The reason for us coming out of COVID, doing ways of trying to develop new solutions and opportunities for vendors to provide in our city, for them to go out and hastily buy equipment that now we're trying to ban for the use. How this does provide a slight delay in that, it still does not address the problem. If we are going to be serious about minority and women-owned businesses in our city, then we need to have a real concerted effort that is instead... That goes after the systemic issues, but that is also done in a methodical way, not in a hastily way. And I think that, again, when we're trying to mix applesauce with the poison of this bill and its unintended consequences in the 11th hour, it's extremely problematic. So, that's why I voted no against the amendment. The amendment does move us in the right direction, but this is the type of legislation that we should not be focused on. I'll also say that there's other issues that are jarring issues, that are directly tied to our environment, that we can use this legislative economy and our time to really focus on, as opposed to trying to enforce homeowners to go from gas-powered equipment to this electric equipment that costs more money, that's not easily accessible, and has its own challenges in operating. So, with that, that's why I voted against the amendment. Thank you, Mr. Parliamentarian, for instructing us. This goes back on second reader. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next bill.
City Council Bill 24-0478, rezoning 1214 through 1224 Holland Street, 21 through 23 South Carey Street, and 14 South Stockton Street. President Mosby. Cohen. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 24-0479, rezoning 901 West Mulberry Street, 317 through 329 North Schroeder Street, 222 North Fremont Street, 811 West Saratoga Street, and 203 North Amity Street. President Mosby. Cohen. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 24-0495, zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R8 zoning district, variances 509, 511, and 516 North Carrollton Avenue. President Mosby. Cohen. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 24-0553, Mayor's Anti-Animal Abuse Advisory Commission Amendment. President Mosby. Cohen. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 24-0560, sale of property, 1012 East 43rd Street. President Mosby. Cohen. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
This bill has been approved. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 24-0561, repeal of ordinance 99-573 as amended by ordinance 00-093, playing unit development, 4221 Shannon Drive. President Mosby. Cohen. plan unit development, 4221, Shannon Drive. President Mosby, Cohen, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill?
City Council Bill 24-0570, city property, naming the playground located at Lake Montebello to be the City Council President Mary Pat Clark Playground. President Mosby, Cohen, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill?
City Council Bill 24-0571, zoning, conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R8 zoning district, variances 730 East Preston Street. President Mosby, Cohen, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, the last resolution?
City Council Bill 24-0574, rezoning 1921 Light Street. President Mosby, Cohen, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Now we're going to move over to committee announcements. Chairs, when you hear committee, please stand and make your announcements. Before we proceed to committee announcements, I would like to give a few announcements regarding the council's calendar. The regular council meeting scheduled... Yeah.
That bill, 2306, uh, 0367?
Yeah.
It can be adopted this evening by a roll call vote of 12.
Okay. All right, we'll go back to it.
No.
So the council, uh, parliamentarian has done his due diligence. We'll get back to that. Um, the regular scheduled meeting of the, on December the 5th, 2004, at the request of Councilman Cohen, will begin at four o'clock as opposed to five o'clock. So that's December the 5th will take place at four o'clock and not five o'clock. Uh, the following bills are now assigned to Ways and Means Committee. That's 24-0533, that's 24-0530, 24-2, I mean 0529, 24-0517, 24-0516, 24-0496, 23-0455. Uh, these bills were previously assigned to ECD, but again, now have been reassigned to Ways and Means. Uh, and based off of the due diligence of our parliamentarian, and I think the, uh, ask of the bill sponsor for bill number...
0367.
0367. Can you call that in real quick again? Just call the title.
You want me to call Jose?
Oh, she got her about. Just read in the title.
23-0367, prohibition gas-powered debris removal equipment.
Okay, so it was on third reading for the night. Just to kind of go over the process, uh, there was a floor amendment that was ultimately adopted by this body, uh, that took it back to second reader, uh, and with a roll call of 12 or more votes, uh, we can move it on to third reader tonight?
If we said the reprint, the reprinted bill must be held over to the next council meeting unless it is advanced to final passage on the same day on the affirmative vote taken by roll call of 12.
Correct. So...
Be done.
So we can immediately adopt it as well, since it was already on third reader. Please sit down to you. Good call. We're working it out with the parliamentarian. Um, so we can, um, advance it tonight with a roll call of 12 votes. Can we do that all in one motion?
Yes.
Okay. So at this time, if the requester of the motion would like to make the motion for us to, um, pass this out on second reader tonight, and in that same motion, um, double read it as third reader, and then we have to come back and do a roll call for third reader. Is that accurate?
We do a roll call through the 12. It's done.
It's done right there. Got it. So do we have that for the motion? At this time, I'd like to recognize sponsor of the bill, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sorry. I'm still seeking clarification here. Nowhere in the city council rules does it say that a bill that is amended on third reader is on second reader that I can find. There are rules that say that if a bill is amended on third reader, as happened tonight, then it needs to be reprinted before it can be voted for final passage, which can be done for the next city council meeting.
Yeah. So I think we have a solution in place.
Or...
We have our, we have our council parliamentarian who's clearly giving out his orders to us of what we should do. I think which would be more prudent in time is that we proceed forward in a way that passes the bill out tonight. I think anything else about maybe some other procedural matters that you might have concerns with, we can just kind of take up in a time that's, uh, outside of the order of this council.
So for clarification, if there's a motion, uh, and seconded, and we, uh, move for 12 votes in order to put this to advance today on third reader, if there aren't 12 votes to advance it to third reader tonight, at which point it would only take then eight votes to pass it on third reader.
Correct.
But if that 12 vote fails, then it will simply be on third reader at the next city council meeting.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we're all very clear about that. I have no problem with it being held over to vote...
It doesn't have to be held over if, I mean, that's what I'm trying to get to. I'm trying, I'm trying to help you out.
Sure, sure.
So the reality is, we can listen to what the parliamentarian said, right? We thought it was really important for us to have one. That's a sign. We have one now. I think what makes more sense is for us just to put the motion on the floor, and then if we don't get our 12 votes, then we still come back next week and we'll be able to vote it out on third reader.
Thank you, Mr. President.
So will you put the motion on the floor?
Sure. I'll move the bill to advance to third reader for passage tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you so much. Is there a second? Okay, let's do a roll call.
President Mosby?
Nay.
Cohen?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Conway?
Aye.
Schleifer?
Aye.
Torrance?
Aye.
Burnett?
Yes.
Bullock?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Costello?
No.
Stokes?
No.
Glover?
No.
Ramos?
Yes.
Score knows.
So the bill passes, uh, and will be printed for third reading next week, neck, at the next council hearing. Um, that wraps up all of our legislative business tonight. What we're going to do is we'll turn this time over now to our chairs. Um, I think, uh, Chair FNP, you have some committee, some committee announcements for us?
We have some unreadiness. Mr., uh, you have to stand, Councilman.
We didn't need any votes in order to move this on to the next...
No, we just needed to, we just needed to pass it. So it passed. It was, it was amended on the floor. It passed second reader based off of that amendment on the floor. It only needed eight votes. Uh, he asked for a same-day advancement, same-day passage. He needed 12 votes to get that. It was shorter than 12 votes, so it goes to the next council meeting for a third reader.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. All right, this time, Mr. Chair of FNP, the floor is yours.
Uh, yes. Uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the Finance and Performance Committee will have a hearing on, um, legislative oversight hearing for Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. That will be on Thursday, October 31st, here in council chambers at 3:00 P.M. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Chair of Executive Designations, Chairman Schleifer?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee will hold a hearing on, um, a legislative oversight hearing on the Charter Revision Commission on October 10th at 3:00 P.M. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee will also hold a hearing on Bill Number 24-0554 on November 7th at 3:00 P.M., as well as on, uh, Bill Number 24-0576 on November 7th at 3:15 P.M., and that is for Preservation Conservation Districts Establishment. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're going to go back to FNP. Uh, Chairman Bullock, something else you want to add?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. This is actually for Economic and Community Development.
Okay.
I'm standing, standing in for, uh, Vice President Middleton. So again, uh, Economic Community Development, uh, Committee will be having a hearing for Bill 220140R, informational hearing about permit reforming. That will be on Tuesday, October 29th, in council chambers at 2:00 P.M. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're going to move it over to, uh, Ways and Means. Chairman Costello, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing?
Without objection, rules 10-2 and 10-3 will be suspended at this time. Hearing and seeing none, unreadiness, the rules are now suspended. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, October 15th at 10:02 a.m. Council Bill 24-0597, city property, renaming Riverside Park Pool to the Congressman Elijah E. Cummings Community Pool. Mr. President, move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing?
Rules 10-2 and 10-3 will be suspended, uh, without any unreadiness or concerns. Hearing and seeing none, the rules 10-2 and 10-3 are suspended. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, October 15th, 10:03 a.m. Council Bill 24-0596, rezoning 1223 through 1229 Argyle Ave. Mr. President, move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing?
Council rules 10-2 and 10-3 will be suspended without, uh, any, uh, concerns or unreadiness. Hearing and seeing none, rules 10-2 and 10-3 are now suspended. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, October 15th, 10:04 a.m. Council Bill 24-0593, Ordinance 24-362, Revenue Obligations, Water Projects, Repeal and Replace. Mr. President, move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing?
Council rules 10-2 and 10-3 will be suspended without any unreadiness or concern. Hearing and seeing none, 10-2 and 10-3 are now suspended. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee will hold a hearing Tuesday, October 15th, 10:05 a.m. Council Bill 24-0530, Transit Oriented Development, West Baltimore. Mr. President, move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing?
Without objection or concern, rules 10-2 and 10-3 will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, uh, rules 10-2 and 10-3 are suspended. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing Tuesday, October 15th, 10:06 a.m. Council Bill 24-0529, Transit Oriented Development, Ricehurst Town Plaza Amendment. Mr. President, move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing?
Without objection, rules 10-2 and 10-3 will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, rules 10-2 and 10-3 are now suspended. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, October 29th, 9:57 a.m. Council Bill 24-0516, zoning, conditional use parking lot, principal use, 1211 Jefferson Street. Mr. President, as a note, this and subsequent announcements for this date will be hearings that will occur prior to the package of three bills related to the M&amp;T Bank Stadium, uh, parking lots that an announcement was sent out about, uh, late last week, uh, for that day. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for, uh, calling it out and reading it out.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing?
Without objection, rules 10-2 and 10-3 will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, uh, at this time, Mr. Chair, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing Tuesday, October 29th, 9:58 a.m. Council Bill 24-0533, zoning, conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to four dwelling units in the R8 zoning district, variances 15 North Stricker Street. Mr. President, move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing?
Without objection, rules 10-2 and 10-3 will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, Mr. Chair, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing Tuesday, October 29th, 9:59 a.m. Council Bill 24-0599, zoning, conditional use crematorium. Uh, Mr. President, Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing, uh, that was previously, uh, scheduled for October 8th at 10:04 a.m. It will be rescheduled for November 12th at 10:00 a.m. rezoning 901 Asquith Street, which is Council Bill 24-0580. Mr. President, uh, another bill that was scheduled for October 8th at 10:06 a.m. Council Bill 24-0582, rezoning 3305 Esther Place is being rescheduled for November 12th at 10:01 a.m. Mr. President, I move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing?
Without objection, rules 10-2 and 10-3 will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, Mr. Chair, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, November 12th, uh, 10:02 a.m. Council Bill 24-0598, zoning, conditional use of a single-family dwelling unit to three dwelling units in the R8 zoning district, variances 2106 McCullough Street. Uh, Mr. President, I'm going to ask that you come back to me before you conclude the hearing tonight. Uh, Mr. President, move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing?
Rules 10-2 and 10-3 will be suspended without any unreadiness. Hearing and seeing none, rules 10-2 and 10-3 are now suspended. Mr. Chair, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing Tuesday, November 12th, 10:04 a.m. Council Bill 24-0517, rezoning 151502 and 1508 Soto Road. Mr. President, move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing?
Rules 10-2 and 10-3 will be suspended without any unreadiness or concerns. Hearing and seeing none, Mr. Chair, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing Tuesday, November 12th, 10:05 a.m. Council Bill 24-0496, zoning, conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to three dwelling units in the R8 zoning district, variances 2904, 2910, and 2914 Parkwood Avenue. Mr. President, move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing?
Rules 10-2 and 10-3 will be suspended without any objection. Hearing and seeing none, rules 10-2 and 10-3 are now suspended. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing Tuesday, November 12th, 10:06 a.m. Council Bill 23-0455, uh, zoning, conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to four dwelling units in the R8 zoning district, 1127 North Caroline Street. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Now, do you have one additional announcement, Mr. Chair?
Working that out right now. We'll get back to you before the end. Thank you, Mr. President.
I believe we're finished with all committees. Oh, Chairman Conway, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety and Government Operations Committee, um, is going to cancel and reschedule a hearing for LO 22-0030. We're going to move it from Wednesday, October 9th to November 13th, 2020, um, at 1:00 P.M. uh, in council chambers. This is for Legislative Oversight, Crime Reduction, and Violence Prevention. Uh, and the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee will, uh, cancel hearing LO 21-0015, which was originally scheduled for Wednesday, December 18th. And we are also going to cancel LO 23-0041, uh, which was scheduled for Wednesday, December 18th.
Just for the public knowledge, could you read the title of both bills, uh, both hearings that are canceled?
Um, LO 21-0015 was Baltimore City Fire Department EMS Stat and Operations, and LO 23-0041 is Baltimore City Fire Department Operations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, we're still trying to do some quick housekeeping in Ways and Means. I believe we're finished with all committee announcements. Uh, while we're getting Ways and Means straightened out, we're going to go to regular announcements. Are there any irregular announcements? Councilwoman Porter, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Um, I just want to honor the life of Melvin Stukes, um, former Maryland State Delegate and former councilman, um, for the South Baltimore area. He passed away, um, last week, and so just wanted to offer, um, honoring for its celebration of his life.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Melvin Stukes.
Porter. Chairman Bullock?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, back at, again, in front of you about running. So, um, there's a, a great event that's happening in our district on Sunday, October 6th. It's called the SUEBO 5K Southwest Baltimore. But again, it's, it benefits young people. If you are under the age of 18, you can run for free. Um, so I take advantage of the opportunity to support, um, Southwest Sports and Fitness Alliance and other, uh, entities that are doing great work in Southwest Baltimore. So please come out and join us, uh, 9:00 o'clock on Sunday morning, October 6th. Thank you.
What place do you plan on finishing in?
Uh, depends on if I run with the boys. Uh, we'll take it easy, but I might try to win it again. We'll see.
Oh, that's the excuse. The whole needs. All right. Mr. Chair, are we good or no? Is something else? Uh, wa, wait one second. Uh, are there any other regular announcements? Uh, I do, um, we'll go to you and then we'll close out. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I had previously announced that on Tuesday, October 15th at 10:03 a.m., we would be hearing Council Bill 24-0596, rezoning 1223 through 1229 Argyle Ave. I am now rescinding that announcement, and I have two subsequent announcements. Uh, Mr. President, I move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing?
Not this thing again. That was a joke, guys, I'm sure.
Tough, tough crowd.
We've done, we've done it like 25 times tonight. All right. Uh, without objection, rules 10-2 and 10-3 will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, rules 10-2 and 10-3 are suspended. Uh, Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. At that same time, Tuesday, October 15th, the Ways and Means Committee at 10:03 a.m. will hold a hearing on Council Bill 24-0596, which is a sale of property for 1400 Leadenhall Street. Mr. President, I move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing?
Without objection, rules 10-2 and 10-3 will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, rules 10-2 and 10-3 are suspended. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, November 12th at 9:59 a.m., and that is going to be on Council Bill 24-0598, which is a rezoning for 1223 through 1229 Argyle Avenue. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And just for the public knowledge, we're getting, we're getting close to the end of this term, so obviously, uh, the runway room is shrinking. Uh, there's limited times for us to have meetings, uh, so that's why we're trying to squeeze in some really important bills and some important meetings. With that, we have to suspend the rules, uh, to, uh, from a statutory perspective, to ensure that, uh, we're giving the public proper notice. Uh, we're going to go back into regular, uh, commi, uh, regular announcements. I've been informed, uh, by Hosea that tomorrow is, uh, the 100th birthday of our President Jimmy Carter. All right, so everybody kind of be on lookout. Hundred's a huge number. We can clap that up. And I also want folks to know that not only tomorrow's the 100th birthday of Jimmy Carter, but it's also the first win that the Orioles will receive in this year's playoffs. All right? So as a, a huge fan, uh, like many of you are, I am, uh, saying today that we're going to win tomorrow. We're not going to repeat what we did last season, uh, that this is Orioles Magic. Uh, we had a wonderful, wonderful rally with the Orioles down at the harbor. Uh, the public turned out. It turned out to be a really, really, uh, nice day, even though the, the weather did not necessarily participate. Uh, but I ask folks to please just tune in. Please go to the game, continue to shout. Uh, let's get Oriole Magic back to Baltimore. Uh, with that, um, I was going to put in a resolution, I might do this, uh, that you're not allowed to wear a Yankees hat, uh, in a, a, a permissible building. I see Derek Green kind of cringing back there, uh, during the playoff, uh, that the Orioles are in. So we have to figure that something out. But with that, are there any other regular announcements? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close out. Uh, Council Chairman Schleifer, please close us out.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next regular meeting of the Baltimore City Council will be held on Monday, October 7th, 2024 at 5:00 P.M. At this time, we'll, uh, recognize a moment of silence for the 152 victims of homicide this year, as well as Delegate and Councilman Stukes.
There being no new business before the desk of this council, let's conclude this meeting. Our next regularly scheduled meeting of the Baltimore City Council, please tune in. Baltimore, we absolutely love you.